Evening to you all and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Garner Town Council. My name is Ken Marshman, I'm the mayor and I'll be presiding this evening and perhaps you've met our other council members, but you'll have an opportunity to hear from them during the course of the evening. So, as we usually do, we will call our meeting to order and I will ask our town clerk if she will to call the roll at this time.
Mayor Marshburn?
I am present.
Your approach him Vance?
Present.
Councilmember Behringer? Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you and councilmembers, thank you for being present this evening. As we usually do, we're going to open our meeting with the pledge of allegiance, so if you're able to stand and can, if you would do so at this time, face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. You may be seated. Now, I'd like to introduce to you one of our, the chaplains for our police department, Mr. Louis Long, excuse me. I had two L's there and I wanted to hear if that was it, so, thank you so much, Mr. Long's been with us on other occasions and he will lead us now in our invocation.
Pray with me please, as your lead. Heavenly Father, we thank you Lord for this day that you've given us, we thank you for our health which we can't take for granted. We thank you Lord for people that are showing such an interest in their community by being here this evening. We thank you and we ask your blessing on the elected officials, Father, that are coordinating and conducting this meeting, Lord. Guide them according to your will and give them wisdom. And we also, Lord, ask your blessing on those that are here for presentations or to present matters, Lord. And we thank you again for so many people interested in the betterment of our fine community of Garner, Lord. And we give you all the thanks and praise in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule to come and lead us, we really appreciate it. Okay, during the very early portion of our meeting, we have something called petitions and comments. That's the time when folks can appear before the council to address the council on matters that might be of concern to them. Usually we ask people to sign up in advance. Miss Clerk, did we have anybody sign? Okay. But notwithstanding that, if there's somebody here who failed to sign up and wanted to speak, I'd be happy to recognize you at this time, we always have sort of a time limit on those things. Are there persons here who wish to do that? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move right along then to the adoption of the agenda. Councilmembers, you have that before you and I will ask you at this time if I can get a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Matthews and segued by Ms. Behringer, thank you very much. All in favor of adopting the agenda, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay, we have a couple of presentations, I guess I should say all presentations usually are very special, they come in different sizes and so forth, but tonight, I'm pleased to, and I'm gonna come down in just a minute and recognize these folks, but we have with us this evening the GBI, eight and under all-star team that won the Tar Heel State Championship and they finished the All-Star Summer League with a 13-1 record. So, we'd like to recognize them by name, their coaches here, and so if you will at this time, fellows and coaches, come up and maybe just stand up here and I'm gonna come over here and say a few words and we have a little item we'd like to give to you, okay? Come along. Okay, I'm going to, I'm gonna recognize the, I believe it's the head coach, is that right, Randy? I have to say a few personal words about Randy Lucas. He and, he and my son played baseball together, probably when they were about this age, and that goes back a few years ago. And so I've known Randy over the years and I think it's a great indication of his character and his, his commitment to both these kids and our town to be a coach and to do so, and he's done it for many years and we congratulate you for the success you've had. So, I'm gonna ask you Randy, if you will, to introduce, well, why don't you introduce your couple of coaches there and then we'll call out the names, I have you call out the names of each kid and we've got a little token from the town Okay, so you, so the championship was...
I wanna say they wasn't the only Garner team up in Boone either, they wasn't the only Garner team up in Boone. Like three or four other teams represented up in Boone. And when they lost out on Saturday, they came over and supported up them on Sunday. Brooks was supporting, supported them and the Outer Banks even supported them and everything, to beat the West.
They, the town, would be the most proud these boys to win this sports match.
Thank you guys, proud of you all and the coaches, it's a pleasure to have you come up here, come back again sometime and... We're really proud of you. All round of applause.[852.81][852.91](Applause) Yeah, I can't call them down from in here, so I'm sure they'll be fine out there, but the room is considerably cleared out. Okay, we will now continue with our second presentation and for that, this is a presentation of the new ISO rating for Garner Fire and Rescue and Matt Poole will recognize him as chief and understand, rather than Mr. Mike Causey being here tonight, Mr. Tony Bailey is standing in for him. He couldn't make it this evening, so we'll recognize him, but Matthew, I believe the floor is yours, sir, to begin. I might just say as you begin, it's nice to see all these firemen here and they're dressed uniformed, so, thank you guys. We appreciate the good work you do. Mr. Poole?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and Mr. Mayor, excuse me, and members of council, thank you for us being here tonight. At this time, I'd like to call two individuals to the podium to discuss our presentation. So, Tony Bailey serves with the Office of State Fire Marshal, he's a rating inspector and he will be doing our presentation tonight, as well as Darryl Alford, who is the Fire Services Director for Wake County, if I could ask them to come to our podium. And Tony has a few things to say about our ISO rating.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you Chief, it's an honor to be here tonight, Mayor, members of council, citizens of Garner. On behalf of State Insurance Commissioner Mike Causey and Chief State Fire Marshal Brian Taylor, we're here tonight to bring some good news to Garner and the Garner Suburban Fire District. Back in May of this year, I came in and done a very extensive inspection on the Garner Fire Department. We basically rated three areas within the Fire Department, one was the overall Fire Department operations. Secondly was the water supply for the Garner Fire Districts and third was the Communication Center for Wake County. There's 105.5 possible points in this process that are able to be obtained. These guys really worked hard, if you look around the room with everybody sitting here tonight, and Chief Poole will attest to this, it takes a tremendous amount of work to achieve what I'm getting ready to present to you guys tonight. I'm proud to be here, I'm just honored and humbled to serve Wake County and you guys are in 1% of all Fire Departments in the state tonight. 1% of all departments in the state. I think that says a whole lot about you. But on behalf of Commission, Chief State Fire Marshal, I'd like to present Chief Matt Poole and the Garner Fire Department with an ISO rating of a Class 1 for the Town of Garner Fire Department.[1098.81][1098.91](Applause) Garner Suburban Fire District, which is the outskirts of Garner, I'm pleased to announce there was an approval, an improvement in that district as well. That district went from a Class 490 to a Class 390. So both districts have improved. Commercial property owners should see some decreases in their, in their insurance on their properties in town as well as in the rural district, but I'll turn it over to Darryl and I think he's got a few words he'd like to say tonight.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey and Mayor and Council and Town Manager Dickerson. Wake County is very fortunate to be able to cost share and be a part of the Garner Fire Department and the county unincorporated areas, as well as the Town of Garner that it protects. As Tony said, it does take a village, Garner helps Fuquay, Fuquay helps Garner, so I hope you're very proud of all you members. We're very proud of the membership here at Garner and the outstanding grades that they got. They jump in with about six other municipalities now in Wake County with a Class 1. And as Tony said, that's the highest mark that you can achieve. With the size of the county unincorporated district, Garner Fire Department getting a 3 is a, is a very huge deal as well and again, we're very proud, would like to thank Chief Poole and the membership of Garner Fire Department. Not only have they been accredited this year and become an accredited Fire Department, they have achieved the ultimate goal of a Class 1, so congratulations guys.
Mr. Mayor, just have a few brief comments. For those of you that don't know what an ISO rating is, so every Fire Department in North Carolina is given a rating based on the three criteria that, that Chief Bailey discussed. And so those, over the course of the Fire Service in Garner, we've improved those ratings over time. 10 being the most efficient rating there is and one being the best. And so we, to achieve a one rating for us is a milestone and there's, there are several people that I'd like to thank. So if you allow me the opportunity, the first group of people that I'd like to thank, and we would not be here if it wasn't to the individuals to my right and those tuning in tonight. As Tony said, we're graded on our operations. I don't run a fire call, they run the calls every day and every night and we are a Class ISO rated department because of their operations. So I would like to personally thank all the members of our organization and the work they do. Second, I'd like to thank our administrative staff. The, to get organized and to make sure that we hit all the criteria for this is difficult and it takes years to achieve and there's some key people that I'd like to recognize. Chief Donnie Lindsey, Assistant Chief with us, is retiring in December and he's been a part of two ISO processes, so Chief Lindsey, I'd like to thank you for your time that you spent with us in the organization.[1293.41][1293.51](Applause) Next is our Deputy Chief, Tim Herman. As many of you know, Tim has been selected to be the Apex Fire Chief, but ISO rating 1 would not have been achieved without the organization and planning and resources of Chief Herman. And words cannot thank him enough for the work that he's done for the Garner Fire Department and we wish him the very best of luck as the Apex Fire Chief.
Could stand back a little.[1324.11][1324.21](Applause)
And the last person is not here tonight, so our accreditation manager and Assistant Chief, Jason Hathcock, he came in as, while we were finishing the accreditation phase and the organization of that certainly helps our ISO rating. We just got a text message, he is a, he's a father, so they were expecting and they just had a newborn son within the hour, so he's not, he shouldn't be watching right now, but if he, if he watches, congratulations. But I wanted to thank him as well. So thanks to our administrative team for putting this together. I wanted to thank Chief Bailey and Darryl for the, for the support, being here tonight and allowing us that opportunity. And then the last few people I wanted to thank, I wanted to thank the Town Council and Town Management. I could not achieve the organizational support without resources from our financing entities. We couldn't have the equipment to do the job we do and the personnel to perform those if you didn't support us. And so I appreciate being here tonight. What you're seeing is one of the most important things we've ever done in our organization and we couldn't have done it without you. So thank you for the support that you've given us through the years. And I want to end with this. There are 30,000 Fire Departments in the United States and less than 300 are accredited and we are, we are in that 300 which is less than 1%. There are 1,300 Fire Departments in the state of North Carolina. 18 are Class ISO 1 Departments. And there are only 10 Departments in the state of North Carolina that are fully accredited ISO 1 and that puts us in the less than 1% range in the state too. And it could not be possible with every, without everyone in this room and the support. So thank you very much and I'm as proud of this Fire Department as I have ever been in my career.
Okay, I'm gonna give our council an opportunity to say a fairly quick word in regards to this presentation and the achievements of the department and we congratulate you. I'll start with Mr. Matthews over here to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is truly a, a big day and I had the honor and privilege a few years back to be a volunteer fireman and, and I'll never forget the day we ran calls all night long and saved Clayton, somewhere down that way, but we had a brush fire and Chief Poole was on the back of the brush truck and I was driving it and I had the time of my life and, and Chief, you've come a long way and so many of these guys here and had a chance to go through first responder with Don Johnson and we had some good nights, those nights and, but this department's come a long way and we've got Station 5 coming now, who would ever, would ever have thought? And a good congratulations to your job going over to Apex, we're gonna miss you, I was hoping we was gonna keep you, but you ain't gone yet, so we'll see. But congratulations again and I don't know how you're gonna do the top desk, but y'all come up with something, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, Ms. Singleton?
Yes, Chief Poole and everyone here, congratulations, it's an outstanding honor and you're serving the citizens of Garner and also the county, helping to bring down commercial tax rates, not tax rates, I'm sorry, commercial insurance rates. So thank you all for your hard work. And Chief Poole, if I have memory serves me correct, you were here as a parent years ago when kids came before the Town Council and the other Town Hall, is that not correct?
Yes, sir, yeah, my son, they attained the same achievement that they did. We offered to scrimmage them after this is over, they didn't take us up on it, but, yeah, it was an honor to watch that happen again tonight.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Ms. Behringer?
Yes, it has been a long and sometimes bumpy road, but well done, very well done to each and every one of you. I wish I knew all of your first names, some of you I do, but every time I hear the Garner Fire Department praised outside of Garner, it's, it's just unimaginable how much pride we have. So thank you for all that you do and I'll just say, call out, embarrass one person by name and that would be Walter. And he and I came into service at the same time, didn't we, Walter? Thank you for all you've done, you are amazing.
Yeah, first of all, congratulations and I'm not easily impressed, but since I've been on council, I've always been in awe of the excellence of the department and I mean that, like, from here. It, a lot of people think they have the best and they think they know what excellence is, we, we actually have it here. And I just wanna assure you that as long as I'm sitting up here, I'll be looking out for you guys. So thank you.
Thanks, sir, and Mr. Vance?
Congratulations to you. You all have provided services to my family in a very professional manner. Many years ago when I had hair, y'all came to my house and took care of my son for me and I, and just professionalism and how y'all handle yourselves put us at ease and took care of the situation very well and to Chief Ramsey, congratulations on retiring. And Apex is great getting Garner's best and we will definitely miss you. And this was something that's a team effort. And Chief Poole, congratulations to you also because if all falls down, the buck stops with the chief, with the leadership and the direction and the integrity that you had going through this whole process and everything we're going through, it just exemplifies the professionalism that's right here in Garner. Thank you all and we're proud of you.
Thank you, and I would conclude by saying that I would echo and agree with, with all the things being said here by this council chief and, you know, one of the great privileges I have found in serving as mayor is the opportunity to get to know and to, and to receive sometimes credit that I don't deserve for the good work that our departments do. You make us proud every day and we so much appreciate the work. I know a lot of your work is, is quite visible and is seen easily, but I know many times you do things that the average person doesn't know, I won't get into it, but I know I called the chief a couple of years ago when I was out of town and somebody had a dead deer that they couldn't move and needed some help with and there were several things, but I don't know where Chief Poole was, but he, he got up and took care of that in a manner and I thought, what a, what a gracious thing that was for somebody who needed some help at that time. So, they've saved a lot of lives and done a lot of good work, so thank you gentlemen and ladies for... Chief, any final words?
No, sir, thank you, if we could get a brief picture with Tony and you, Mr. Mayor, our certificate before we clear out, that would be great and thank you for your time.
Okay, can we do that right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, I'll come down there, thank you. Let's give one last round of applause.[1774.51][1774.61](Applause) As they are filing out, we will, we will move to the next item, and in some ways, it's a, it's sort of a natural lead-in when we think about hazardous things that occur and how we, as a people, need to be aware of those things. And so tonight, in recognition of Hazard Awareness Month, I guess, or proclamation has to do with, with Preparedness Month, I'm going to ask Mr. Singleton, if he will, to read a proclamation that has been prepared for this occasion.
Garner Preparedness Month 2022. Whereas Garner is at risk for a multitude of hazards, including severe weather, terrorism, biological events, hazardous materials incidents, nuclear emergencies, civil unrest, and other man-made or natural disasters. And whereas thus far in 2022, Wake County has experienced 18 flash flood warnings, 54 flood advisories, 88 severe thunderstorm warnings, six tornado warnings, and 25 extreme heat warnings. And whereas political division has increased the risk of domestic terrorism and civil unrest, and whereas Garner has experienced severe weather, whereas every community, business, family, and individual in Garner is encouraged to be ready for natural and man-made disasters, including terrorism, tornadoes, flooding, hurricanes, and other emergency situations that might disrupt normal daily activities. And whereas all Garner residents can take steps such as making a family disaster plan, creating emergency supply kit, and staying informed to help make preparedness and personal responsibility a priority. And whereas Garner residents should know and understand the risks of their area and plan accordingly. And whereas Garner recommends that residents include the safety of their pets and/or livestock in their emergency plans. Whereas FEMA and the Office of the President of the United States recognize September as National Preparedness Month to encourage North Carolinians, Wake County, and Garner residents to be disaster-ready. Now therefore, Ken Marshman, the mayor of the Town of Garner, does hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as Preparedness Month. In the Town of Garner, and encourage all residents to plan and prepare for weather-related and man-made disasters by assembling their emergency supply kits and updating their emergency plans, signed with the Town of Garner seal by Mayor Ken Marshman.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Singleton, and that proclamation is very apropos this time of the year, at least in this part of the country, we think about hurricanes and other weather-related events, but there are many other things that we should be alerted to, so I encourage all of our citizens to take heed and, and follow the advice. So thank you again, sir. Okay, council, we will move now from the area of presentations to the consent agenda. There are eight items, I believe, on the consent agenda, all items that have been discussed previously. So I will entertain a motion as relates to the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any further questions? Hearing none. If you favor approving the consent agenda, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. If there's any opposition, no. And there is none, so the consent agenda is approved. All right, we will now move into the next segment, which is a public hearing. We have one public hearing this evening, and so I believe we will recognize Ms. Cabby Lontose Lawler. It's good to see you tonight.
Good evening, Town Council. Good to see you all as well.
And let me just officially open the public hearing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm here presenting tonight on annexation case 22-08, which is Rollman Farms, previously known as Old Stage Town Homes. And just a quick overview of the case information, this is a contiguous annexation petition. It's located along Old Stage Road, just north of the intersection with Vandora Springs Road. The total area to be annexed is 62.3 acres and 3.1 acres in right-of-way for a total of about 65.4 acres. And this petition follows a request for public water and sewer for Rollman Farms, which was approved in December 7, 2020, for 318 townhomes. And so here you just see where that site is located. As I mentioned, it's on the, it's on the west side of Old Stage Road and just north of the intersection with Vandora Springs Road. So with that, the motion is to consider adopting the annexation ordinance 2022-5141.
Okay, thank you so much. And before we formally ask council for the motion, I'll see if council has any questions in regards to this particular item. Okay, the issue is ripe for a motion, is there one?
Mr. Mayor, can you just note for the record that there's no public comment?
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, I feel to note that or ask if there's anybody here who wished to make a comment on this particular item. Okay, none for the record, thank you. Now motion is in order, I believe.
I move that we adopt annexation ordinance number 2022-5141.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Who favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Cabby, for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, we now have one item under new and old business, what a Buffalo development agreement, and that will be brought to our attention and presented by our town attorney, Ms. Terry Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you'll just bear with me for a moment. Mayor, members of council, as I briefed you last week on development agreements, this is a follow-up based on a proposal that has been submitted by Polte Homes. On the Teams meeting is Mr. Randy King, who's from Polte Homes, who is available, I believe, to answer questions if you have any. He does not have a formal presentation tonight. But just for the public, just to give a little bit of context, this is associated with the Walters Buffalo rezoning that you had a public hearing a couple of months ago. It's been reviewed by the Planning Commission two times, most recently in August, and the rezoning is ready to come back to you for a decision. However, in that conditional rezoning, there was a condition proposed, which is Condition 22, which you see on your screen, and this has to do with off-site road improvements to the corridor around Bryant, the Bryant Road and White Oak Road intersection. So as you can see here, this would include widening White Oak Road to four lanes about 1,300 feet north of the intersection to about 1,000 feet south of that intersection. And in this, there is, part of the condition would be that this be subject to a separate development agreement between the town and Polte Homes that would cover, as you see here, the scope of the improvements, the timing, assistance from the town, reimbursement or cost shares, and coordination with NCDOT for the ultimate goal of both widening the road and having a traffic signal installed at that intersection. Part of the conditions, and I don't need to go over each one of these unless you have questions, but this development agreement, the town can execute with Polte if Town Council so desires. After, you would have a legislative hearing. That legislative hearing requires a certain amount of notice, 10 to 25 days before the hearing is set. But basically, this would have Polte doing the design of the road improvements and preparing estimated costs, obtaining title searches, and reaching out to impacted property owners to acquire the necessary easements and right-of-way. Then Polte, as the developer, would also seek participation from the developers of other pending projects. If they can come up with agreements, they will enter into private cost-share agreements between the parties that will go over what's needed for necessary right-of-way, and also what would be the prorata share for each developer to contribute to the overall cost, including the acquisition of the easements, as well as the design and construction. Polte would then begin the road improvements and would complete the road improvements on or before they plat their 300th residential unit. And if you recall, the Walters Buffalo is a combination of single-family homes and townhomes. They would have about 95 more units to go after that. The whole project is just under 400 units. Once they complete the construction of the corridor road improvements, not including the traffic signal, they would submit the final cost to the town, and then hopefully the signal would get installed by DOT at that point. And part of what the town would be agreeing to is, in the absence of a cost-share agreement with all of the other pending developments in this corridor in this, that would impact this intersection, they are asking that the town agree to compel all of the other developers to dedicate the necessary right-of-way and easement, or to pay a designated fee in lieu, which would, based on the prorata share of the final cost for both the acquisition and construction, and that would be based on the number of trips generated from each of the projects that are impacted. The town would then collect these corridor fee payments from the other developers and then turn those payments over to Polte. This would occur for a period of 10 years after completion of the corridor improvements, and at no point will Polte recover more than 100% of the total cost. Now, this is the proposal as designed, but there are a couple of caveats or contingencies. If for some reason Polte is not able to voluntarily acquire the necessary right-of-way and easement from the impacted property owners, the town would then initiate condemnation or eminent domain actions with Polte covering the legal expenses and costs of any court cases, including any settlements by consent judgment. Again, this, these costs would then be put into the overall final cost for the project. And if they were not able to acquire the right-of-way and easements by November 15 of next year, Polte would pay a fee in lieu in an amount equal to 35% of the estimated cost to perform all of the corridor construction improvements. And again, these estimated and final costs will include acquisition of the right-of-way, construction materials, design, engineering, labor, permits, any, and then if there's any necessary wetlands mitigation, also construction management and testing and certification. So tonight, I am asking council to provide any feedback you have on these proposed terms as they have been laid out, to also, if you're inclined to go forward with a development agreement, to set a public hearing date. As I mentioned last week, we'd need to decide on the level of public notice, whether you want to provide notice to abutting property owners or 1,000-feet radius. And because this involves off-site improvements, the statute isn't exactly clear about who gets noticed, but my suggestion would be that we give notice to those impacted by the Walters Buffalo rezoning proposal, as well as those property owners in this corridor that will be impacted. That would be the 1,300 feet north on White Eck Road, north of Bryant, and then about 1,000 feet south, so that both, so that anyone who might be impacted by this development agreement would get the required public notice. And again, that could be either done just the abutting property owners or 1,000-foot, for instance, 1,000-foot radius from that intersection. And then also to direct staff to finalize the proposed agreement with Polte as the developer. As you may recall from last week, once the notice of public hearing is posted and mailed and published on the town's website, a copy of the development agreement must be available for the public to inspect. So we would have to have that agreement finalized in the proposal to come before council at the public hearing. With that, I'll entertain any questions you have, or if you'd like to hear from Mr. King.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones. And so, council, you've heard the presentation by our attorney. This is not a public hearing this evening, but it's designed, as she has indicated, to give any feedback that you'd like to give at this point in time, and to decide the parameters of setting the subsequent hearing that would take place. So I'll start with Ms. Behringer at this time.
Excuse me, one question. We're talking about the public notices, that the Bryant Road, White Oak Road intersection that we're talking about.
Right, so the, the state law is not exactly clear. It says, it talks about impacted, it talks about the property that's the subject of the development agreement, as well as abutting property owners. Because these are off-site improvements, the typical notice that you would provide as part of the rezoning process would not necessarily cover property owners that might be impacted by the actual corridor road improvements. So my suggestion would be to provide notice to both groups of, of impacted properties.
Okay, I'll skip around a little bit and go to Bill next.
Nothing this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Go to Mr. Vance down here.
Can you come back to me, Mr. Mayor? I'm just trying to think this through.
Okay, come back to you, okay. I'll come back to Singleton.
As I showed, I've got a few questions. So according to what we have here, because we haven't seen the final rezoning proposal, there's at least 22 conditions. This is condition number 22. If this rezoning happened to pass, and this is part of that, part of the conditions.
Yes, you had the public hearing on this project several months ago. I believe it was at Planning Commission in July and August, so you probably saw it in June.
The, you're getting all the, you're getting everything in place, so in case, but if there's a vote, and if it is approved, then this will be in place as part of that, that condition. Right below the list here, you have, Polte is unable to acquire the necessary right-of-way and easements, the town will initiate and file condemnation actions, Polte will pay legal expenses and costs for court cases, et cetera. The next line, I have a question. If necessary rights-of-way and easements are not acquired by November 15, 2023, Polte will pay a fee in lieu of the amount equal to 35% of the estimated cost to perform the entire improvements, and that's entire improvements," and that's it? Is that what I'm hearing, reading here, or is that?
Yes, so just to give you a little background, if they're not able to acquire the right-of-way and easements on behalf of the town and/or NC DOT, then they really don't have the legal right to enter the property to actually do the construction. So at that point, it would, the town would need to complete the acquisition process and then use the funds that are collected from various developers to go through a regular contracting process to do the road improvements. But yes, they're proposing a 35% share.
Of the total cost of all the improvements.
Right.
They'll initiate and do this, design and do this and that, but they're going to pay 35% of their cost share.
Right, well, they would, at that point, next fall, they would be paying 35% of the estimated cost, because we wouldn't have completed construction and know what those are.
I will have for right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dellinger.
Just to, other questions, but to follow up. It's 35 of the estimated, why wouldn't it be 35 of the final? I know it would take a while to know what that number is, but we've seen the cost of things continue to increase, so that number would not shrink over time. And I saw above where the prorata share of the final cost for the other developers would be the final cost and not the estimated cost if they came online before the project was finished. Is, so is that in, is it written that way in the, what we received from them? I mean, I'm assuming it is, since...
Yes, I mean, they're proceeding under, I guess, a best-case scenario, is that they would not have difficulty acquiring the right-of-way and be able to proceed with doing all of the construction. This is a fallback position so that they can actually proceed with their project. But if, if you're inclined, we can, you know, incorporate a provision that would allow for a truing up or an accounting at the end of it to see whether the fee in lieu they would pay upfront would equate to 35% of the final total cost.
I guess that goes to my other question on the process. I know this is new for us, but if this is the proposal they have for us, have we countered these yet? Or is that kind of what we're doing now? Because it's hard to really, without seeing the actual document, since it's a very legal document, to know, see the timelines that are sort of outlined in this. So when do you really want our feedback on the agreement? Like, do, do we want to get the copy they've submitted to us now and give you feedback after the meeting over the next week? Or do you want us to wait till the public hearing?
Well, we definitely don't want to wait till the public hearing, because you'd likely be in a position where if you didn't like one of the terms in there, you would be basically not voting in favor of it and not approving it. So we, we do want to hammer out a lot of this before. So if, if on this law, you know, kind of these basic terms, if there's something that you don't like at this point, for example, the 35%, if you don't feel that that's sufficient, then that would be a, that's feedback that we can incorporate into the final agreement. But this is, is basically the structure of, of what the agreement would be with, like I said, those two contingencies about whether or not they are able to, to acquire voluntarily from the impacted property owners. And you may want to hear from Mr. King as to why 35% is the proposal. This particular project is not, based on the traffic study they have now or the traffic impact analysis, they are not 35% of what's going through there. They are less than that.
Yeah, I just, I would need to see the actual legal document, because I can't, I don't see how the timelines work together. I can't give feedback or, or think through what makes sense. So I would need to see the actual document before providing extensive feedback. I do have some other questions. One is, what is the estimated cost of this entire improvement?
The example in, and it's an example right now, because there, there hasn't been the design at this point, and so the example was $3 million.
So the town's share of that would be, I mean, I, I guess what I'm getting, when they came to us the first time, they asked one question, and it was, "How much is it going to cost the town?" And they said, "Nothing." And I was like, "Okay, it's not going to cost anything." And now I want to kind of get an idea of, one, how much is it going to cost the town? And then how are we going to pay for it? I know you can't answer that question.
So, so at this point, the structure of the agreement is the town is not contributing anything to the road improvements. The town may need to contribute, my understanding is the town may need to contribute to the traffic signal, depending on, on that after, after all the, the necessary acquisition is there. But Pulte is taking the risk that they won't necessarily get paid, you know, the other 65% of what they're, you know, agreeing to do in this, that for whatever reason, if other development doesn't happen, that there would not be other developers contributing to this cost. So they are assuming some of the risk.
So I just need to read, that's what's not, it didn't come clear through these particular conditions. The other question is just on traffic and the modeling of the traffic in that area, and whether we, we've done that as a town to model the traffic? And what is the impact of this going to be on that? Like, what are the current daily averages on their, on those roads down there? I looked at DOT, and it looked like some of them hadn't been measured since 2015. And so I'm not sure, when we're quantifying the impact of the improvements, what those would actually be. And I don't know if they've done that, or...
So they have done some of their own analysis from their own traffic engineer, but this is also based on some other development projects that are pending in the area, who have also done traffic impact, or have submitted TIA's traffic impact analysis of it. So it's, it's based on not only their own analysis, but some other developers and their traffic engineers, all of which have been reviewed, the ones that are already submitted have been reviewed by the planning department, and my understanding, the engineering staff.
I think that would be helpful to know kind of the impact on the traffic, because I don't think it, the impacts of the, what's already been a, what's there, what's been approved, and what's coming is accounted for in the limited capacity of whiteout specifically. And so I kind of would like to see that, too. Modeling all the traffic down in that area to get in and out, since the counts don't seem to be current on, from DOT's side. So I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll come back to you if you want me to. Let, let me go back to Mr. Vance, who am I promised to go back to?
Right, my, my question's, my question specifically pertained to the, to the timeline that you have here that's being proposed. And I'm looking at the next to the last bullet, it says, "The town agrees to compel other developers within the corridor area to dedicate necessary rights-of-way." But, but several bullets above that, it says, "Pulte commences construction of the corridor and right-of-way improvements." Is, will the, will the right-of-way be acquired before they begin the improvements?
Yes. My understanding is that the project cannot be completed without additional right-of-way and easement acquisition. So the, if they're able to acquire all of that, my understanding is they'll be, if they haven't already, they'll be reaching out to impacted property owners very, very soon if, if this is executed. So ideally, they would be able to acquire everything that's necessary to do the entire construction project, which includes widening and restriping, but, but mainly includes widening of the road to a four-lane section. Ideally, if they're able to do that, they will then commence construction. They will, they will complete the design, they will bid out the project in accordance with their own construction timeline, and then they will seek to be reimbursed by other development in the area that comes subsequent to their process. And, and any project in that area of a sufficient magnitude will have to do their own traffic impact analysis. And to answer Councilman Dellinger's concerns, it, it will keep getting updated as time goes on. Each subsequent development, based on the traffic impact study and the trips that their project generates, will be allocated a prorata share of those total costs, whether they be the, the estimated, depending on how early they come in the process, or the final costs.
Okay, all right. My next question is, looking at this, I'm just going down and sequentially, "Understanding that the right-of-way will be purchased before construction begins." Now, if we look at that one bullet that's right below that, it says, "Pulte submits subdivision plots for up to 3,000, 300 residential or townhome lots." Will that happen after construction commences? That they submit, submit their plots for approval, like?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but they may be in the construction process while they are continuing to develop the lots on their project.
Okay, I just...
Up to a point of 300.
Okay, because I was just looking at the sequencing of this and make, want to make sure, I understand that the right-of-way needs to be purchased before construction begins, construction begin, at which time they will be submit their, their plot to us. Okay, I'm finished.
While you may be thinking, I, I have sort of a general question, I guess it's proper to ask at this time, since, since these, this development agreement is still, it's kind of a new process for us. Would you say that the, you know, the items listed here, at least for this type project, are, are these sort of a, what I'd call a brawler plate, listing of things that you'd ordinarily find in these kinds of agreements, except tailored to the specifics here? Is that, do you understand my question?
Right. These are the, the basic terms of the agreement between the town and the developer. There are other required, the state statute requires some other information that would be incorporated into that as well. But that mainly has to do with identifying the impacted properties, identifying who has ownership interests in those. But really, the crux of this is who's responsible for the infrastructure, and then what's the timeline of that? So again, if, if council doesn't believe that they should be able to build 300 of approximately 400 units before completing the construction, then certainly a different milestone can be placed into the agreement.
Okay.
But just to be clear, they don't intend to complete all of the road improvements and then start plating their lots and building houses. They, they want to be able to do this as a concurrent project.
Okay. Let me see if there's any other questions on this end down here. Mr. Matthews, anything? Mr. Samuel?
Since we're talking about if this process goes through, the town will collect these fee payments from these other development projects, for as it states, a period of up to 10 years, and then reimburse that money to Pulte for the six, help cover the 65%.
Right.
That's what, that's what it'll go against.
Mm-hmm.
The other, the other 65%.
Right.
Okay, just clarify. Also, Mr. Dellinger brought up the point that I kind of halfway mentioned about the estimated cost. I would like some true-up language in there, since we've had our own firsthand experience in road construction costs escalating. I think that's only reasonable.
Anything for you, Ms. Behringer?
One question, is the Department of Transportation contributing financially at all to the installation of the stoplight?
I, I don't have that information. My understanding is, from what I've heard, is that to get it sooner, the town may have to contribute something to it. But normally, NC DOT would be responsible for the, the traffic light.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, the question on the, the process piece, so we were talking about the prorata share and us compelling other developers. So they would be, this development agreement is almost creating a policy for that road improvement that would extend out to other subsequent developers? And they'd be sort of bound by this agreement? I mean, you see what I'm saying? Like, we're creating sort of a project and then creating a policy that a developer or the project would have to come in and follow. So is all that captured in this document, or is there another document that would need to be created?
Each other developer would likely be subject to a very similar development agreement. Perhaps they're not responsible for design or construction, but they, it would have a, an allocable share to them. Now, any project that's, I think the threshold is 75 peak trips, or 100, or, I mean, 1,000 average daily trips, would be subject to doing a traffic impact analysis and likely have to contribute in some way to off-site road improvement. So that's, that's nothing different. The idea is that we're starting with these estimated costs, and one developer going forward first, deciding that they will actually, instead of waiting for the town to make all these improvements as a capital project or some other project, to be able to move forward, they're actually doing the design and construction, assuming the risk. But requiring other developers to do traffic improvements is nothing new. Many developments might not have a 35% share, you know? So, so there is, there'll be some long-term difficulty in allocating these costs, and it will also depend on how quickly other projects come, come online and are part of this. So each other developer can submit a traffic impact study that may say their percentage is likely to be something else, and that'll have to be determined for each project that comes forward. Now, obviously, not all of the projects that might contribute to this intersection have road frontage along White Oak or Bryan. So we have other property owners who might not be developing at all, and that's why right-of-way and easements need to be acquired at this time.
Last question on the process, when we talked, since the development agreements are new, is it current with the rezoning, or does this go, does the development agreement go on its own path to public hearing, planning commission, and then back to us? And then the rezoning would come in on that second meeting, since we've already done a public hearing for the rezoning?
Right, so under state law, it can be done concurrently. The rezoning has moved ahead of this process. So, but they're coupled together, because the rezoning has proposed a condition that is a development agreement. So you could have the public hearing for the development agreement, and in the same night also approve the rezoning if you wanted to. That's an option, or the other option is to do them. But it's, it's somewhat a chicken and the egg, because you can't really approve the rezoning without a development agreement, because that's a condition. But the development agreement doesn't necessarily stand on its own. So it's probably best to make the decisions concurrently. And what I forgot to mention is, given the timeline, and also that the September 20th meeting is already very heavy with public hearings, my proposal would not be to have this before the first meeting in October. That would both give time to finalize the agreement and have it on an agenda where it's not competing with your attention for other projects.
My last question. It was a condition by the planning commission that the development agreement be included. So are they going to see the actual development agreement that they thought should be included?
So under state law, they're not required to make a consistency recommendation on the development agreement, but you certainly, if you want their input, you certainly can send it back to the planning commission to consider that. So that would have to work into, because of, because the notice has to be not less than 10 days and not more than 20... and not more than twenty-five days, if you wanted to go to planning commission, we wouldn't not necessarily be noticing the public hearing, because I don't think we can get it on the agenda for Monday night for them to fully consider. So it probably would have to go another month.
The order would be, anyway, public hearing, like for other projects, we do public hearing, planning commission, and then it comes back.
Right, or you could do it that, in that sequence as well.
Do the public hearing, October, planning commission, then back to us in, of October, or?
Okay, okay, thank you. Anything else, Ms. Vance? Okay. So, Ms. Jones, if I'm understanding correctly, I'm looking here at the bottom of page of council action, so council has provided their feedback, so that's taken care of, and so the, I guess the issue or the motion before us is to decide on, well, to set a public hearing date, and you already proposed a date, I believe, and to then decide on the level of public notice, that is, abutting property owners or a thousand feet radius, and then direct staff finalize the agreement. Is that correct? Do we need to do that in a form of a motion, I would suppose?
Yes, however, I'm not sure if Mr. King has anything to add that he wants you to consider for this, but...
Okay.
He appears to be online, but I don't know. There he is.
Ms. King, if you can hear, so I assume you can, we'll hear from you at this time.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. Well, thank you, and thank you for all the discussion tonight. I apologize for sitting on sidelines. I'm joining you from out of town, and we were just having a tremendous lightning storm, and so my computer's not been working well, but I did hear most of the conversation. We appreciate the thoughts and want to continue to work with staff to address some of these comments. I think it would be good for the council to receive this draft version, so that we can understand your thoughts and concerns as we try to get this finalized. We would ask, we've been, a lot of work has gone into this, and we would ask to be able to bring this back to public hearing as soon as you and staff feel that we're ready. We've been working on this and want to keep it moving ahead. As far as our current status, I think we've got an updated design that I'd like to share with staff next week. And with that, I think we could reach out to some of the property owners to understand their thoughts on right-of-way dedication. And we have also talked to three developers that would appear to be interested, maybe, in working with us on the front end of this, which kind of makes it easier to move things forward. So we are making progress there, but our next step is to get this agreement finalized and to get your staff's thoughts on our road alignment, so that we can start moving forward towards understanding property negotiations and establishing a budget. So, again, we appreciate your time, and I'll answer any other questions you might have, as long as my internet holds out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. King, and we appreciate you being with us, at least virtually, this evening. I'll see if council has specific questions for you at this time. I'll start here. Any, anything? Mr. Vance? Mr. Singleton?
Sir.
And Mr. Matthews?
Just a comment, if I may, and I've been trying to take all this in, hear what everybody's saying, and I think through the years, we've heard, you know, developments come in, you know, they need to be a part of the transportation or helping move traffic with the development, and the fact that we can get, I use the term, public-private partnerships, but getting the development portion of it, working together to help widen roads, put in signalization, and help move traffic forward, I think that's a positive thing. We've been looking for that for a long time, and it's now starting to come to pass, and hopefully, this will set an example for future development coming, that, you know, if you're going to build, you've got to be a part of that process of moving traffic at the same time, and working together. So I appreciate Mr. King putting this together, and all the questions that have been put out here tonight, I think we're doing it right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. All right, if there are no other questions for Mr. King, Ms. Jones, I believe, a motion would be in order from council at this time, is that correct?
I still have a clarification question.
Go ahead.
So, we, the process is, we have the public hearing, and it follows, it goes to commission, and then comes back, and that would be how we handle development agreements in the future as a policy. I know we had drafted a specific policy on how to handle them, because they don't, they're not in the UDO, so I'm just trying to be clear on what the process is.
Under state law, you're just required to have a public hearing. So you could actually have the public hearing and make a decision that evening. That's what's the minimum, or that's what's required by state law. You can choose to have a more extensive process if you want to, including referring it to the planning commission, and then having it come back to you at a subsequent meeting.
Would this be precedent-setting on how we handle them, or would it still be case by case?
Right now, it's case by case. You could adopt an ordinance setting forth more of a procedure. I would recommend seeing how this plays out, you know, how this works, before going and adopting that type of process, but under state law, you can have it on a case-by-case basis.
So for our action tonight, if I'm understanding correctly, we would move, as it relates to this particular project, and then we will take others as they come, before we decide on a formal procedure or ordinance.
Right. If you're inclined to go forward, what I, and I'll just summarize what I've heard, is that you want to see the agreement. We have some tweaking to do based on the comments that I heard tonight to get you that agreement, but yes, if you want it, if you're inclined to go forward, you could set the public hearing for, I believe it's October third is the first Monday in October at that first meeting.
Okay.
That would give us some time to work out and get feedback written, or verbal feedback from you as individuals, rather than as a body, prior to the notice of public hearing, having to go out and the document having to be finalized. That's not to say that things can't change after that, but what goes to public hearing is the proposed document that's available on the date of the notice of public hearing.
Okay.
Ask a question? So, Ms. Jones, does that mean that the rezoning hearing, or rezoning, we've already had the public hearing, are we going to hear both items on October first, or are we just doing this proposed agreement first? I mean, I know the other, this proposal for this project to be rezoned is in the loop, so is that going to be the same night, or we can do that after we get to this point? Because, of course, that resoning comes up, and of course, if the rezoning does not pass, and this would not be a part of, because it's not, it's part of the condition. So, I don't, I'm just trying to figure out, are they still concurrent, or what?
You could do it any way you want. If you were inclined not to at all adopt the rezoning, if you, if there were other factor, I don't remember there being other factors that weren't worked out at planning commission, but if you were inclined, let me say it another way, if the development agreement is not the last issue to be resolved before you could make a decision on the rezoning, then you might as well have them on both nights in whatever order, so that you can give some certainty to the developer and the public. But because it's a condition of the rezoning, it makes it difficult to approve the rezoning without knowing that the development agreement is finalized.
That's fine, I was trying to get clarified.
Now, you could approve it with this condition of a subsequent development agreement, but then, you know, it's hard to unwind that zoning condition if you can never reach a development agreement with the developer.
So you're suggesting that we have, on the public hearing on October first, it's for this development agreement and that only? That's what you're proposing, correct?
Technically, the day is October third, I guess.
October third, I'm sorry, not October first.
Yeah. I'm not guaranteed that that's the day, but I think, I believe it's Monday the third.
That's the first Monday in October, according to my count.
Yes.
You know, it's entirely your option. I'm sure the developer would like to sew up as many details as they can, as quickly as possible, but it is your prerogative to set the process.
I think it makes sense to finalize the development agreement before hearing the rezoning, because of exactly what you undo the rezoning if the redevelopment terms can't come together, right?
So they could both be scheduled for October third, and then depending on how that hearing goes, and whether you're inclined, you know, you could always continue the rezoning till a later date, or you may be continuing the development agreement if, after that hearing, you want to make other changes. I mean, there's no guarantee that you have to take action at the public hearing.
Terry, if council wants this to go to planning commission after the public hearing, would that change the sequence?
Right, well, yes. So if you definitely want to refer this development agreement to the planning commission after the public hearing, then yes, it would not, would probably be no reason to entertain the rezoning that night.
So either way, we're trying to get a date, I guess, for what we're going to hear. The proposal to have it on the first Monday in October, I believe, in conjunction with that, it says, "Direct staff finalize proposed agreement, Pulte." I'm assuming that staff can work within that confines of that timeline, is that correct, Mr. Manager and Mr. Town, Assistant Town Manager? October third is a reasonable date, I guess is what I'm asking.
Yes, I haven't checked it on account.
It will somewhat depend on how much feedback we get from council on the draft agreement.
Yeah. Okay.
But we have to give a minimum of ten days' notice.
It seems like that would work. You said October third?
Yes, first meeting in October.
Yes.
Yeah. Counsel, good with that? Okay. Vote on that.
So if you could make a motion for October third, and then, just because it's a detail that I'm concerned about, whether you want to just notify abutting property owners or a thousand feet, like you would do for the rezoning.
Okay, seems reasonable to me to probably include that latter, the thousand feet, but that's just this person's opinion, so I think we're ready for a motion on the matter. Okay, counsel?
May I move that the public hearing for the development agreement proposed by Pulte Home Company be set, public hearing be set for October third, 2022? Is that it?
Okay, counsel, hopefully we vetted it pretty well. Any questions before we vote? All right. Hear none. If you approve the motion that has been made, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, vote no. And there is none, okay. All right, we'll work our way through the process and...
There was consensus on the thousand feet.
Notification.
Notification.
Yeah. Mr. Vance, did you intend for your motion to include the notification as it relates to the thousand feet? Okay. All right.
Thank you, and I'll be, once we have a draft that's finalized based on the feedback we received tonight, we'll be sending that out. We'll also have to include part of these preliminary plan, you know, conceptual plans that they have for the corridor improvements, so that you can see what the scope of those are, and the number of property owners that will be impacted by those. So you should be getting that sometime next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, for your good presentation and your assistance in helping us work our way through it, fair enough. Okay, that's the only item under new and old business. I'm going to go to committee reports. Are there any committees reporting tonight? None there, okay. All right, hearing none there. We'll go to managers' reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Mayor and Town Council have just a handful of announcements, just to keep these dates in the forefront. The CLU Steering Committee meeting will be September seventh at five, I think it's going to go from five to about seven o'clock, and that is tomorrow.
Location?
Is the location here, or the training room?
Training room here, and you'll get some information from Mr. Trezenberg, tonight or in the morning with the agenda, and I think some information about food being provided, if they're able to work that out. So I'll let him confirm whether or not that'll be in his information.
Okay. And next, the Connect Conference is on September the eighth, which is Thursday, so it's going to be a busy week.
Yes.
And I think that bus tour starts at ten, and then that event will go until about five o'clock, I think, goes on into the early evening.
That includes a lunch, I believe, and then, yeah.
Yeah. That will be at the GPAT.
Right.
This year, yep. The next outdoor movie at the Rec Center will be Encanto on September ninth at seven forty-five on the lawn there. The Night Market will be on September twenty-third, from five to nine, downtown, of course. And just a change and announcement we made earlier, Vandover Springs Road Project, I know we had reported the road would be closing pretty soon, but that's been backed up till September the sixteenth through the eighteenth. I guess that's tentative. I know they ran into some rocks, so that's kind of delayed some things for them. So, once that gets closer, we will put some announcements out about that road closure when we have better information on the timing, and that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, sir. Anything from assistant managers? Okay, or attorney?
No report this evening.
Mr. Mayor, just confirming that, you may have heard Ms. Jones say it, that Mr. Trezenberg did just, was emailing at the same time we were discussing that, and there will be food provided ahead of the meal, ahead of the meeting tomorrow night, a meal provided, and there'll also be a break about five forty, that you could also get food during that.
And I might just note, maybe council has noticed, I believe I saw maybe late this afternoon, an email from Mr. Trezenberg proposing at least the next two meeting dates after this first one, was that correct? Did anybody else see that?
Okay.
Okay, so you can note those as well, I guess. All right, council reports. Start down here with Mr. Vance.
I do not have any.
Okay. Mr. Dillinger?
Want to report, just a kind of initial request for, I know we have some public hearings and projects coming up on September twentieth, and I think it'd be helpful to start to try to estimate the revenue generation by project. So if you have a townhome project, start doing, getting used to, trying to give some ideas on revenue generation based on tax rate and tax values. I know it'll be a range, but I think it helps give us kind of scope and scale on just a baseline of what, in the future, we can sort of anticipate as revenue generation goes on the, at least on the property tax side. It'd be just an alpha version.
I don't know that we would have anything to work with for the cases that are coming that quickly, we can...
I mean, I can do it and present it. I mean, I'd just rather you all do it.
Well, I think it would be appropriate.
We would have to have some decent information on the value, I guess, of the properties.
Right, and you're not technically supposed to be considering the price point?
No, no, not price point, tax value. So this is a revenue income, town revenue measure, not a sale price. So, trying to get a ballpark figure, start getting estimates on how much these projects are going to generate per project. Make a template and send it to you. Make a template and send it to you.
Yeah, we can do it, but it's, it's going to be very...
It's going to be based on so many assumptions that I don't know how valuable it would be.
I understand it's, it's an alpha, it's a first try. We wouldn't necessarily use it as this is the gospel for how much generate, right? But we should get in the habit of looking at that for scope and scale for projects we approve.
We are working on modeling like that to be a part of the CLU initiative. So that is, there's some economic impacts as well as some cost of services that'll be a part of the, the CLU initiative.
Yeah. I'll bring it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll talk to you.
I hear you, Mr. Hawes, you're saying there, there will be some discussion directed to at least something similar to what Mr. Dellinger's saying at the, at the CLU meeting. Is that right?
I, I don't know if it'll be at tomorrow's meeting, but there is some of that type of modeling development as a part of the scope for the CLU initiative.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Mr. Dellinger?
Yep.
Ms. Behringer?
Yes, sir. A couple things. The sign in front of Garner Rec Park, the, the town seal and the, the big sign, the blue background has faded quite a bit. Can we get that improved so that it matches the other signs around town and the one close by that's smaller? Anybody?
Yeah, we can take a look at that, refurb in that sign.
Yeah. It's, it's the background. Everything else looks good, but the blue background has faded quite a bit. And the speed limit sign on Penny Street has been knocked over and needs to be set up right. And then there are a couple of signs on Highway seventy going west, once you come off the off-ramp on fifty that have been knocked over and, and a couple of them, one of them anyway, has been completely broken. I don't know what kind of...
We'll report those to DOT because DOTs would send crews out for that, but yes.
Okay. Ms. Singleton?
Yes, a question because we had, I'm looking at what's proposed for our Tuesday, September twentieth meeting. There were four public hearings and then two old new business. One was Water, Waters Buffalo, which now that won't be part of it. Do we know if there's, at the fore, there's three public hearings listed and one is tentative. And so do we know if we still have that many public hearings? I'm just, I know it's a lot on the agenda. So I'm asking.
Got to get Mr. Trezenberg to respond to that for us if he has any up-to-date info.
Yes, there are four. There's one special use permit and three zoning cases.
And the special use permit is the public, is the fire station number five?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. All right. Just wanted to say, I know we talked about, there was a, a heavy agenda, so one item has been taken off, but, okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Mayor, I had the pleasure for many years when I served as county commissioner to work with the, the former mayor, Mr. Dick Sears of Holly Springs, and of course, he had passed due to illness and, but I just wanted us to remember him. And he truly was a gentleman and very, when I was a county commissioner, my phone was ringing. He had ideas and things he wanted for Holly Springs and he was a hard worker and he was a true, he was, I tell you, as a visionary, he got it done. And he had a vision for Holly Springs and so much of it coming to pass under his watch. And, but he is, of course, passed away and just wanted us to remember him and just caliber a man he was. He was a great man and he was good for Holly Springs and good for Wake County.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, and I would certainly concur. He, Sears was active in the Wake County Mayor's Association. That's where I got to know him. In fact, I think he was one of the first mayors to call me after I was sworn in and to offer any assistance he could. And he followed through on that on several occasions. Just a fine gentleman and apparently the citizens of Holly Springs thought so as well. I, I've forgotten how many years he served, but I think it was something in excess of twenty, I believe. Yeah, he'll be, he'll be missed. Haven't met his, the current mayor, Sean, and I think he's doing a good job, this Mr. Sears. All right. I don't have anything else, so unless there's anything else for the good of the cause, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Does it move?
Okay. Paid by Mr. Matthews, seconded by Ms. Sing, excuse me, Ms. Behringer. Ms. Behringer. Okay. All right. All in favor of the motion adjourned? Please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. So approved. Thank you, council members, for your good work tonight and we will see you at our second scheduled meeting this month, I guess. So, thank you much.